Any public comments this evening? Seeing no public comments, and we will go on to approval of the minutes, which we don't have any minutes from previously, since we didn't have a meeting two weeks ago. And on this evening's agenda, we have two hearings. We have a annexation 01-03, and we have variance VR 99-07, which is remand back to us from Luba via the City Commission. Then we have quasi judicial hearings. We have legal information that must be given to the participants who are here this evening, so please follow along. As I mentioned, we have two public hearings on land use applications for this evening. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available seven days before tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read these criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report, along with written comments and input received through the public notification process for each application. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown to the chart over to the side. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a yellow slip, which is one of these, and give it to staff. Letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they are submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, ORS 197.796 requires us to announce the following: The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. And we have some time limits that if maybe we will be utilizing. It's usually fifteen minutes for a group or an organization, five minutes for an individual. So the first item on our agenda, I believe, is going to be a continuance of AN 01-03, annexation of Clarkmoss County map number 2-2E-32 DC, tax lot 500.
Good evening, Commission. Good evening, Commission.
Good evening.
How's that?
Good evening.
Good evening. In your packet, there's a short memo from Sean Cook, Assistant Planner, involved with AN 01-03, and the staff has agreed to request that you grant Mr. Schultz a continuance to a date uncertain while he resolves some issues about service delivery to his property before going on with his annexation. The letter from Mr. Schultz is on the next page, and staff recommends that you do grant by motion a continuance to a date uncertain, but at least before the March 2002 election.
And how far ahead of the March election would this need to be processed to get it on the ballot?
No later than probably your first meeting in December. However, we're giving the applicant latitude to look at some issues on his property because it's fairly complicated, so we would expect you to hear this in either November or by the first of December.
Okay. Does any of the commissioners have any questions? Seeing no questions, are we ready to make a motion?
Well, I would move that we are doing here, we are extending the time period on number, agenda item AN, annexation, AN 01-03, Harold Schultz at 1721 Penn Lane, Clarkmoss County map 2E-2, 2E-32 DC, tax lot 500, annexation, and that be continued to a date certain. Do we know what the date is certain?
No, it's date uncertain.
Should we have a date uncertain?
Till further notice, right?
Okay, but I'm concerned about going to the end of December, that we should have it by the end of December, or he would miss his opportunity.
Well, in that case, staff will keep him apprised of his deadlines and dates so that he will not put the planning commission in some kind of legal bind by bringing it back, so you can just instruct staff to take care of that.
The other thing to keep in mind is that if the December date doesn't happen, you know, it's not, there is no, you know, there's certainly a consequence, but it's a matter of they would be on the next election instead of the March one, so it's not an irrevocable type of consequence.
Is there a time limit that we have to respond, or since he's asking for a continuance, do we need him to waive the 120-day?
No.
We're okay?
We're okay on that.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Please call the commission.
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayne?
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
And Chairperson Carter?
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt a continuance to a date uncertain, but before the March 2002 election.
Okay, next on our agenda then is variance 99-07, the James McKnight request on Clarkmoss County map number 2-2E-31 DC, tax lot 5400. This is a variance to allow reduction in the lot depth from 100 to 80 feet. Before we begin, does any of the commissioners have any ex-party contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias regarding this?
None.
Application? Okay, have any commissioners visited the site?
No.
Okay, I have visited the site. Okay, with that, then we are ready to go ahead with the staff presentation.
At your desk tonight is a memo from myself, Cece de Bill Kabeizman, City Attorney, who's with us tonight, regarding this Luba remand hearing on file VR 9907, and I thought as a staff presentation, I would just briefly go over those memo points for those folks who, well, for everybody so that we're on the same page. Testimony tonight is open to anyone who wishes to testify, but is limited only to those issues that are before the planning commission. The history of this file is that the planning commission denied this variance request on May 8, 2001. The City Commission overturned the planning commission decision and granted the variance request on June 21, 2000. Let me go back and correct an error on that memo. First point is the planning commission denied the variance request on 5800, if you would.
Duly noted.
Duly noted, thank you. And then the City Commission on 62100 overturned the planning commission decision. After that, Mark Reagan and Lynda Lord appealed the City Commission decision to Luba, and Luba heard and remanded the application to the city on April 18, 2001. The City Commission requested that the planning commission review VR 99-07 on May 16, 01. Now, another piece of information at your desk is a copy of the City Commission minutes of the May 16 meeting, where the instructions are fairly clear on what issues they wish this hearing to address. And that follows then on point number three, that the City Commission, in sending it back to you, limited the issues to only factors C and F of the city's variance criteria, chapters And for your convenience, I just listed the two factors, the two criteria, so they're right in front of you. The ordinance in question for criteria N F is the dimension standards for the RTN zoning district, because recall that the request was to vary a dimension in lot size to begin with when the planning commission first heard this file on May 8, year 2000. Number four, the planning commission's role tonight is to consider the evidence in the record and presented this evening on these two factors to determine if each criterion is met. And then we have a packet of material that has been entered into the public record, and it will be discussed, no doubt, by another, more testimony later on in this hearing. How you will know it is that down at the bottom, there are little squares, and there's page numbers. So it's square one, square two, two, square 14, and it includes five pieces of material, and they're listed in this memo as a procedural objection notice, dated 7/22/01, of two pages, a procedural objection notice, dated 7/22/01, of four pages, a procedural objection of, or excuse me, dated 7/22/01, four pages, a procedural objection about the full review, and that's two pages, dated 7/22/01, and finally, a procedural objection of the full review, and that's dated 7/22/01, and it's two pages. So this becomes part of the record, the memo becomes part of the record, and, excuse me, and the minutes of the City Commission, meaning, excuse me again, which, it must have been June 21st. I know. I'm sorry, I've lost my date here. May 16th of year 2001, that's also part of the record. If you go back to the packet that you have in your file, if you turn to maybe ... Exhibit, well, to attachment five, I want to, just very briefly, at the very end of your packet, I wanted to briefly remind everyone of what this hearing is about, because it's been all year, and et cetera, et cetera. This property is located 200 feet east of the intersection of Barkley and Brighton Street. It is presently zoned RTN, which is a single-family dwelling district, and the applicant applied to the planning commission for variance to allow reduction of lot depth from 100 feet to 80 feet. So the question here is the dimensions of the RTN zone, which now require 100 feet, and the request to lessen that to 80 feet, and this 20-foot issue is pretty much the point of the whole request and the whole variance. And again, I recited the parts of the record that you have, and you have an introduction and background to the actual request here dated May 8, year 2000. So unless you have other questions, that's my part of the staff report, and then I would like to have our attorney, Bill Kabeizman, speak to you a bit on the legal procedures and where you need to be going with this as you take testimony, if that's all right.
Sure, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, is there a map available?
Yes.
For that property? That would be helpful.
There's one in here.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission. You have a lot of paper in front of you that probably shouldn't be intimidated by it. The issue tonight is actually relatively, relatively simple, and that is, you need to look at the two criteria that were remanded by Luba, examine the record and the testimony you heard here tonight, and determine whether or not criteria 1760.020C and F have been met. And Maggie gave you those, and I can read those again. "Applicants' circumstances are not self-imposed or merely constitute a monetary hardship or convenience. Self-imposed difficulty will be found if the applicant knew or should have known of the restriction at the time the site was purchased." The second one is that the variance conforms to the comprehensive plan and the intent of the ordinance being varied. A number of procedural objections have been brought forward today, and I apologize for not having a written response to those, but I'll try and make my way through them and give you at least an oral one. The first objection really deals with ORS 197, 1955, I believe. The letter that you have reverses 195 and 197, I'm pretty sure, because that's one that should be applicable, and that statute doesn't apply in this situation. That only applies to limited land use decisions, and this is not a limited land use decision. So that one doesn't apply. Bigger question has to do with notice of what's going on in this case. The memo, the letter that you get cites various cases and statutes, and some of them apply and some of them don't, and, you know, I'll try to make my way through it. Basically, what the city was required to do was provide individualized notice to the parties. You know, the statute that is cited, ORS 197, 763, doesn't, Luba's already determined doesn't apply to all situations, all of it doesn't apply to a remand situation. There are some portions that apply only to initial evidentiary hearings, some that don't. The important consideration throughout all this is to make sure that you protect all the various participants' procedural rights, you know, and on the one hand, you have one party that wants to make sure that they have certain evidence that gets into the record. On the other hand, you've got the applicant who has a right to a decision within 90 days, and so you need to balance it. You can't give somebody an unlimited ability to go out and give the record, to produce whatever evidence they can, but they certainly need some chance. And the question is whether they've had sufficient opportunity. They're mailed notice one week beforehand. You can also look at the excerpt from the City Commission meeting on May 16 that discussed what would occur on remand, and the memo that was provided to the City Commission at that time, which is in your packet as attachment two. So the question of whether or not they have had notice of it is certainly, you know, one that will likely arise on any appeal, and, you know, is up to you whether or not that was protected. I can give you a couple options that you can take. One would be to just find that the seven-day period of the notice that they received was sufficient, and I believe that would probably be upheld. I'm not completely confident. The second option would be to open the public hearing tonight, allow the record to remain open for a short period of time, to allow additional evidence to come in, to meet the intent of allowing sufficient notice. And a third option would be to open the public hearing, continue it to a later date for additional evidence to come in, and allowing some type of rebuttal. You know, I think either, any of those would probably be sufficient, and, you know, I think it's within your discretion as to how to proceed, because our ordinance doesn't cover remand hearings, and there is, you know, the guidance in the statutes is a little fuzzy as well. So those are the, you know, some of the procedural issues. I think those ...
Why do we handle our questions as they come along, so we don't get too ...
Okay. Let me just remind you that your focus should be on those two criteria. The procedural stuff we can work out. It's those two criteria that's most important for you this evening.
Okay, we have, though, that's been submitted, the letter about the procedural objection of not being notified far enough ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what you were just discussing.
Yes.
Okay, and so, when were they notified? When was that notice sent out?
It was mailed out on May 16th. I'm sorry, May 16th is wrong. Last week, it's July 16th? Are we in July? Yeah, July 16th. Sorry.
Okay, so we have the seven days then, basically? Yes, Commissioner?
Madam Chairman, if I may, I realize that we're eventually going to decide this on the merits of the discussion and the particular items that were sent back on remand, but I think it's important to address the procedural issue first and get that cleared up so that people have an expectation of what's going to go on. And I, myself, have no problem extending a period of time if there's a perceived shortness of notice or non-notice that people may or may not have received. I realize that we may have meant the letter of the law within a week, but I, myself, have no problem with suggesting we might want to think about alternatives two and three that Mr. Kabeizman raised.
Okay, so any other comments about items two or three, or the options two or three?
I agree that I don't have a problem as far as extending things out, the seven-day notice if people didn't receive it in time, and we need to go, I agree with what Bob was saying.
I concur. I feel that we should probably let this continue.
All right, well, the question is then, do we want to, you know, finish our public hearing tonight and allow the record to be open for a certain number of days, or do we want to come back to the planning commission, you know, a month from now, and make our decision at that point?
I should also remind you, although the applicant hasn't raised it yet, they do have a right to decision within 90 days of the remand, so there is that additional item out there.
Okay, and the date of the remand was?
Well, are we going to use the 4/18? Are you going to use the City Commission?
5/9/01, is that correct?
4/18.
4/18, so.
4/18/01.
Excuse me, Mr. Kabeizman, doesn't the statute say that that time period begins at the time that the applicant requests, not from the date of the remand?
What the statute requires the city to do is if the applicant raises the 90 days, the city is required to provide him the decision within 90 days, you know, so actually, you know, they have not raised it, but at the same time, that doesn't mean that the city doesn't have an obligation to get them a decision on a fairly timely basis. You know, I'm not saying that you're required to get this decision to them, because they have not raised it, as I mentioned earlier.
Mr. Kabeizman, I was wondering if the next step in the process would be our decision to go to the City Council, so we need to factor in time for them to review as well within that 90-day period?
If one of the parties decides to appeal, it would have to go to the City Commission as well.
You might want to remind him that this is a final decision unless appealed.
Yeah, it is a final decision unless it is appealed.
The planning commission.
Right.
Well, this is awfully, just this decision to, you know, hear the evidence tonight and then continue it, kind of bogs down the whole process, because it doesn't allow us to hear the evidence tonight and make our decision.
Right.
So I personally, I think, would prefer a continuance to where they've had sufficient notice, everything is on the table, and we're ready to go, or let's do it tonight and finish it tonight, and assume that seven days has been long enough to have your information ready. I can't see anything else other than those two options being workable.
Chairperson Carter, my thought on it is both, all the parties involved here have had over a year to gather their information and put things together, or several years, I guess, but, so I think it's just a matter of them knowing when to come here with that information. It's not a matter of either the parties have to go out and get more information. They should have that available to them. They've already appealed it to Luba and gone through that process, so I think a very short, you know, a date certain, like, maybe our next meeting might be appropriate. I don't think we need to drag this out.
On the other hand, what, I mean, with all due respect to the perhaps lateness of notice, are all parties that are concerned with this particular item here tonight and ready to talk, or is there another crowd out there that hasn't, that didn't get the mail yet?
We had our list of who received individual notice, who are the people who were required to receive individual notice on an appeal, and they've been through this process, and they all were notified in a timely manner, so I think that that is not the question. The question is, yeah.
If we've got the universe of interested parties here tonight, and if so, then we can, in fact, move on.
We're not required to rope them and tie them and bring them to the meeting. All we are required to do is give the people who were parties enlisted as, you know, interested parties to the original proceedings our usual seven-day notice, which we did.
Okay, if that's our usual seven-day notice, and as Commissioner Mayne has stated, we really have had, the applicants have had, and the people objecting have had plenty of opportunity to prepare and know what this case is about, and I would be in favor of moving forward and trying to resolve this issue then tonight. I think we're all ready and prepared for it.
I'd like to speak to the passenger.
Please step forward.
I'm Lynda Lord, I'm one of the petitioners to Luba on this appeal. The reason we submitted the procedural notice was because the only thing, or the procedural objection, was because the only thing that we received from the city last week was a copy of the agenda that said that this item was going to appear on the agenda. What was going to happen tonight, what procedure was going to be used, was not mentioned. In the earlier memo to City Commission, the City Attorney had advised them that there were three possibilities. One was that the decision would be made on the record and argument as it now is. Another possibility was that only argument would be received on the two issues that were amended, and then the third was that the record would be reopened, and his recommendation to City Commission was that only argument be allowed. There were lots of items that we didn't include in the earlier time when the record was opened before the City, before the planning commission, because we didn't realize that, how important before the, see, before the Planning Commission, because we didn't realize that, how important they were. And some of those items that we are trying to round up to provide evidence for you so you can make an informed decision are things like the input of Ms. Tamara DeRitter, who was said to have misled the applicant regarding the requirements of the variance or the partition process. She wasn't heard and much was said about her input at the local level last time we, at the Planning Commission, but we didn't realize until last Thursday night after 7:00 when we talked with the city attorney about what would the procedure was going to be tonight, that it would be indeed possible for us to ask her to come and share her memory and her notes of what may have occurred at that particular meeting. That's one of the things we haven't been able to complete. Another issue we haven't been able to complete was on the issue of self-imposed. We have information that has developed since the initial Planning Commission about an offer of sale that was made many years, or many, many, many months ago, maybe years ago, for this, some of the property that's involved in this decision and was renewed recently by the applicant to the previous offering party. We wanted to bring that party before you to show the self-imposed nature of the situation that the applicant is in. He's not available, he's out of town. The third issue that I've been researching is the legislative history of the intent of the ordinance being varied. The issue of creating, doing infill by creation of substandard lots is one that has been discussed before neighborhood association meetings and others and has important long-range criteria, not only for Rivercrest Neighborhood, but for the city. And if this is the city's policy, it needs to be brought forth and discussed in some detail. I have discovered through my legislative research, which Ms. Maggie Collins has been kind enough to assist with, but there's piles of stuff to go through, as you may examine, as you might know. I got 216 pages Friday at 4:30. I had to work both Friday and today. They weren't available on the weekend because the City Hall's closed. I have discovered that on March, in March of 1998, some five months before the applicant's pre-application, there was already a decision to change that aspect of the ordinance. So I haven't been able to actually dig out that paperwork for you. I'm getting close. I know other people who attended those meetings. If the city doesn't have the records, perhaps I can scare up the notes. This is really important to us, the appellants, as you can probably tell. We would very much appreciate the opportunity to do our very best to present to you a very complete picture of the situation where the, the request for this variance sprung from. And that's the reason why I would appreciate it if you would. The next meeting is fine. If people can't show up, that's fine too.
Okay, I have a question. The City Commission made their decision on May 16th to give this back to the Planning Commission. Did you not follow your process through at the last City Commission meeting on May 16th?
I was there and I applauded the idea of the City Commission to bring it back to the Planning Commission because that was the proper procedure at the point.
Okay, so then you knew at that time that this item was going to be coming back to the Planning Commission to be reheard on the two items that were in question?
No, I did not. I did not know that the record would be opened and reheared. That was not considered, was not recommended by the City Commission and it was not in the specific instructions. It just said, "We're descending to Planning Commission." We didn't, they didn't say what they wanted you to do with it. And when we found out the record could be opened, we've had to scramble as fast as we can to provide information that was missing the first time around. Rather than have this come back to you on a remand again, can't we just wait a month and make the procedure work right?
Commissioner?
May I ask the attorney, are we in fact hearing new evidence tonight? That's not my impression.
Yes, actually, the, the recommendation to the City Commission was, you know, that it had, the, the options presented to the City Commission were to just go ahead and make new findings based on the record as it was and not open anything up. Number two, hold arguments at the City Council level and then make new findings. Or three, send it back to the Planning Commission to, to open, reopen the factual record where the options as they're presented to the City Commission. And you can look at page two of attachment two to your packet where those options are The City Commission, as you, you've hopefully received the excerpt of the May 16th City Commission meeting this evening where the City Commission discussed it and they were, you know, they were not as clear as one might hope on exactly what, what was going forward. But given the recommendations provided to the, to the City Council, the City Commission, I believe the only really fair reading is that the record is reopened.
Would the record be reopened just pertaining to these two items C and F?
Yes, reopened only as to those two items.
I think if you look at the last paragraph of that same memo, you see the recommendation of the city attorney was to hold a public hearing which only received argument. That's what we were expecting, a public hearing that would only receive argument. And we didn't get, there was nothing in the information that came to us last Monday that said that there was going to be different than argument. We really have been caught blindsided and would appreciate some consideration, considering how long has gone into this process and how may still go into this process. If we could be cautious, I'd appreciate it.
And you should allow her an opportunity, but why don't we, if you want to finish up the questions?
I'm looking at the, at that paragraph on page two of attachment two, the memorandum of May 9th to the City Commission, is that correct? That says, begins with the sentence, "The commission has at least three options."
Yes.
And that's, "The City Commission has at least three options."
Right.
And these are the options that Ms. Lord just referred to. Where does it, I was trying to find where the instructions to this commission are that we are following one or the other of these recommendations.
The extent of the, the instructions are in the excerpt of the City Commission meeting minutes from May 16th. And if you look at the options that are presented to the City Commission, the first one is to allow limited oral argument after the arg, let me read through that paragraph real quickly and go through those three options. The first option is to allow limited oral argument. The argument would concern only the remanded issues and would be limited to the record. After the argument, "You," speaking to the City Commission, "may then close the hearing and provide direction to staff to prepare appropriate findings." Alternatively, option two, "The commission could reopen the factual record by directing that the matter be remanded to the Planning Commission for another public hearing at which new information could be reintroduced." That's option two. And three, finally, "The commission could avoid any new hearings or argument and simply reconsider the record and argument that have already been presented and then come to a decision on whether the remanded criteria have been met based solely on what has already been presented." So the two options were oral argument at the City Commission or no argument at the City Commission, just reconsider the record as it exists. Or the third one, reopen the factual record. And, you know, perhaps, as I said, the City Commission could have been clearer and they did not come out and say the record would be reopened on, on remand. But generally, the way the, the relationship between the City Commission and Planning Commission has worked in Oregon City has been that the Planning Commission is a fact-finding body. It's the one that, that goes out and holds the hearing, makes its decision. Then any appeal to the City Commission tends to be on the record, allowing argument, but no new testimony or factual evidence. And that's, that's why my, my understanding is that the, when the City Commission made its decision to remand to the Planning Commission, the only real alternative was that the, you know, the only alternative presented to it was the reopening the factual record. You know, as you can see, there wasn't much discussion, you know, and it's hard to tell whether that's, that was in fact what the City Commission was directing from that. You know, one alternative, because it is unclear, we could ask the City Commission to clarify what it wanted to do on this remand. That's an op, option. The, the next City Commission meeting is, I believe, a week from Wednesday.
So the fact is that if it is remanded to the Planning Commission, it falls into the second option, which is to reopen the factual record?
That, that's my understanding, but it is conceivable that the City Commission would remand it to the, to the Planning Commission to hear argument. To the, you know, to the extent all they wanted to do was allow additional argument, the, probably the alternative that would have made more sense would be to keep it at the City Commission level. You know, the, the distribution of, of how, how the, these commissions have operated, it's tended to be the Planning Commission acting as a fact-finding board.
Mr. Kabizman, since the City Commission...
You need to step forward if you're going to speak.
I hope, I apologize if I seem like I'm grinding an ax or something like that. I'm, I'm just trying, trying to protect my home, what can I say? So the City Commission received a procedural objection about talking, about any of the last three items, C or D, E, or F, because the, the City ordinances say that the scope of the hearing on appeal to the City Commission has to be only those criteria that were mentioned in the notice of appeal. Since the applicant did not appeal the last three criteria, the procedural objection said that it was improper for the City Commission to hear it. I believe the City Commission made the only decision it could made by sending it back to you because the Planning Commission had never heard or never considered those three items and they weren't appealed to the City Commission. So to say that the City Commission had an option, yes, they may, they could have kept it to themselves, but it would be reviewed by Luba, I'm sure. I just don't want to have to go through the process of, of, an error on appeal, a point of error on appeal, because we couldn't wait a month. It would really save a lot of time if we could just wait a bit, do it in the proper form and get it over with. And then whatever decision you make, we have to decide what's the next step. But that's, just not be in a rush. We've been here this long, why can't we wait another month?
Okay, I have a question then. If you are, if we give you another month, say, to come back with this and be fully prepared, let the chips fall where they may, are you going to be willing to abide by our decision at that time?
I will be willing to acknowledge that you provided proper notice. And there will not be a, a procedural error, a point of error on appeal for lack of notice, I can get, at least not from me. I don't know about the other people.
I do want to make sure that you remember that we do want to hear from the other side before...
Maybe I should just step down and let her have what she has to say.
I have one more question for you, Ms. Lord. Are you asking for a month or are you asking for two weeks?
I could do it in either, to tell you the truth. What we need to do is to finish the legislative research and we need to finish lining up the witnesses and get affidavits from witnesses who can't be here. Two weeks is appropriate. A month is wonderful.
Mr. Kabizman, if we gave her the month, would that still fall within the 90 day period?
If the applicant had chosen to and sent notice immediately upon the remand saying, "I, I want my decision within 90 days," we'd be out, we would be outside of 90 days as it stands now. The applicant has not provided that 90 day notice. So it, I was using the, you know, I was using 90 days as what the state has kind of dictated as the legitimate expectation of a, of a person who has a remanded hearing. So we're not within the 90 days. If in fact they were to deliver that notice that, the demand that they want their decision within 90 days, we could certainly give a month, then we'd have to adopt findings, assuming that the, that the decision was appealed, we could probably do it to the planning, do it through the City Commission process. But 90 days is shorter than the 120 days that we normally have. So, does that answer your question?
Any more questions for me?
Mr. Bailey, did you have another?
It's almost more for Mr. Kabizman, relating to your point, which is, the scope of this new hearing is going to be on the two items only?
Yeah, I do believe that was...
On new issues that were never raised on appeal to begin with.
That was fairly clearly stated in the...
That may make your homework easier.
In the City Commission decision, if you read through it.
Seems, that, that was my reading of it. I just want to check your knowledge of this.
You know, Mr. Sullivan asked if the commission wished to leave the issues open or did it want to limit it to the two remanded issues. Commissioners Hewitt and Neely indicated that they wanted the two remanded issues.
Okay, can we please hear from the applicant's attorney?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jill Long. I am the attorney for the applicant, Jim and Diane McKnight. I think I'll just start, I'll be quick, but talk a little bit about the 90 days notice. We have not had a written request for that and that was a conscious decision on our part to try and work with the city and give a little bit of latitude for timelines. It is getting lengthy, this process though, and I certainly think maybe at this point, to help everyone know the parameters, it might be better for us to ask for that 90 days. We're certainly willing to work with whatever the Planning Commission decides to do tonight and we will be here again if, if that's your decision and that, that's acceptable. But I would like to note that all the evidence that petitioners are talking about lining up and submitting, we will strongly object to because none of it goes to the specific two remand criteria that Luba gave to us. Luba wrote an excellent opinion and gave two very narrow criteria for us to discuss. It's not even as open really as criteria C and F generally, but criteria C, as Luba interpreted it, to have two pieces and prong two of that. And then criteria F relating to specifically sections of the comprehensive plan that were not cited in the findings that we need to find now and cite them to give weight and give evidence to what was decided by the City Commission. So we will certainly be happy to make those objections at the time that evidence is presented, but I wanted to let you know that we would be planning on doing that. As far as the notice goes for this hearing and it being an, an open hearing, we're perfectly comfortable with seven days. The record in this case is very large and there's plenty of evidence within the record to address the two criteria, in our opinion. So we've been able to use the time effectively and have no further evidence we'd like to collect. You have any questions for me?
Okay, any questions?
Let me just ask, may I ask, Mr. Kabizman, does her, I, I don't want to get into a huge debate here, but does her reading of the scope of the issues involved comport with your understanding of what came out of the, the, both Luba and City Commission? I want to bound the box here. I don't want to, I don't want to get this bigger than it needs to be for any of us.
It certainly comports with the Luba decision. The City Commission did not address it in those terms and to a certain extent...
Pretty skinny in the record there that we got.
Yeah. To a certain extent, that may be an interpretive decision for you to make as to the extent of the remand, knowing that if you get it wrong, it'll probably be appealed to the City Commission and, and they could fix that. You know, I, I think that's going to be something that you're going to have to make the decision on.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, well, well. Mr. Kabizman, can you answer another question for me?
Sure.
How much time would be expected of Ms. Collins to help either the applicant or the, and I still haven't gotten the term right, for the person who is in rebuttal to this application?
Opponent is probably the, the one that works, works best.
Because it seems like a conflict of interest for her to be trying to process an application and be working with the opponent at the same time.
It's, it's not really a, a conflict of interest. You know, the city's role, and, and Ms. Collins may have some comments or thoughts on this as well, but, you know, the city's role is to evaluate the application that comes in and also to provide information. I don't believe it's Ms. Collins' role to assist the opponent in, in putting together and, and going out and suggesting, "You may want to look here, you may want to look there, and here's a good argument here on page 72 of, of this particular thing." It is her role, or it is the city's role and because of the manpower shortage at the city, it probably will fall on, on her to provide any information that's requested. You know, and at the same time, she's not required to go through the record and kind of say, "Here's, you know, page 72 is a good argument." At the same time, you know, it, it's, it's a service that the city has to provide to the public and really should provide to the public to make sure that all public records are available to, to citizens.
As long, as long as that service would be reasonable and not...
Right, and to the extent they're doing, they are requesting public records. The city has an obligation to provide those. And there is a, and actually a city resolution that talks about how that should be provided. And there are costs, you know, between copying costs and if it takes over a half hour of staff time, they can recover the time that, that they spent. You know, that's, that's part of the answer. The other, you know, that they can recover some cost, but at the same time, it, it means that other items may not be getting addressed in as fast as a city would like to. So, you know, the, the... in as fast as the city would like to, so, you know, the, the city has an obligation to provide that, and I'm sure they will, um, but, you know, I don't know if Ms. Collins has any thoughts on that.
Ms. Collins?
I imagine if, judging by what had to happen on Friday for the request for public records, and the time that, um, I personally spent on it, I imagine there's another day and a half of, of, uh, research time, uh, without any, um, uh, if the scope is kept large enough to do that, just to find the records and to make sure that they're, they're copied. And in, in this case, uh, from now on, uh, yeah, we will be charging for the hours spent to, to compile the public records. The information was, um, was provided, uh, without that charge on Friday, and, uh, the applicant chose not to make copies, so, that's where we're at, and I think it'll take, hmm, I'll, judging by the time thing, I think it'd be up to 12 hours.
Well, that is certainly a lot of staff work. Um, gosh. You know, personally, I, I, I feel like, um, that this should really move forward. I can't imagine that there's going to be anything significant that's going to come out, uh, two weeks or a month from now, that, that couldn't be, you know, basically readily available this evening. But it seems that in all fairness, we have no choice but to continue, uh, this hearing to a date certain, uh, of either two weeks or, uh, a month from now, and, uh, give all parties involved their last call to be prepared. And I would hope that, at that time, that they will come forward and have total, uh, openness to the process and the, you know, the, uh, the ability of the planning commission to try and do the fair and the right thing, and the thing that is in the best interest of the city. And with that understanding, perhaps we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion. Concerning variance request 99-07, remand of Luba, 2000-125, I would recommend that we keep the record open until a date certain of August 13th, and that we limit the scope of the discussion to the two items.
C.
C and F.
Only.
And that we not allow, uh, new information, that basically we, I think it was, I think it was, uh, option one, limited oral argument, and concern only the remanded issues. Mr. Kabizman's looking at me, I think I've missed something.
Um, I, I guess, I had one concern, the options that you, uh, presented, the options that were in the memo were presented to the city commission, and I believe the, the, those options aren't really available to you anymore, they sent it back for, you know, to limit the issues, but to keep the record open and to allow additional evidence to come in. One other thing that you may be concerned, may want to consider, as far as when you're setting the date, is confirming when the participants, if they have any, if they are available on those dates, uh, for the next city commission meeting, there, I received an indication that one of the participants may not be available on August 13th. So, in other words, you have a motion on the floor, and probably ought to take some action on that.
I, I, I guess I'm confused about your explanation here. Um, you, Commissioner Maine, do you wish to take, take testimony tonight? Or are you, or was your motion to, um, continue this to the next planning commission hearing?
My motion is, is, is that we could take testimony tonight, but that we would keep the record open until a date certain in August, whether that's the 13th or the 27th. Um, if there's people here ready tonight, I don't have a problem with us listening, hearing, hearing that, but, um, I think we should keep the record open until a date certain in August, and I don't have a problem if it's the 13th or the 27th, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible, though.
Okay.
Uh, clarification, Commissioner Maine, when you say keep, I think it is. Anyway, um, when you say, uh, keep the record open, do you mean have a hearing on either of those two dates? And is your anticipation that we would make a decision on whichever date that we choose?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, I don't think we were thinking of having any public hearing this evening, other than what we've already had, though. I think we're thinking along the lines of, uh, a continuation, and at that time, we will take all the public hearing.
That's fine.
Well, point of order.
I can restate that.
Yeah, point of order, um, Chair Bruce and Carter, he has a motion on the floor, and I didn't know if there was a second, and then, no, there was not. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's not been a second, but I, for discussion purposes, I will second the motion. The maker of the motion wishes to offer an amendment?
Okay, let me amend this. Uh, my motion regarding variance request 99-07, the remand of Luba, 2000-125, I make a motion that we extend, that we extend the record, or keep the record open until August 27th, at which time, we will hear, uh, public testimony. And only in regards to the two criterion, C and F, as, as suggested by the city council.
And I'll, uh, second the amended motion.
Now, if you're saying keep the open record, you're act, uh, the record open to August 27th, aren't you, Commissioner Maine, saying you, you wish to, uh, continue this, this, um, matter to the meeting of August 27th, at which time a final decision will be made? And that gives, um, both, both sides a month to prepare. However, each, each side is limited in scope to factors or, um, items, uh, C and F only?
Correct.
And that, and, um, that new, um, uh, immaterial can be introduced as part of the testimony on either C and/or F.
With regard to only the C and/or F.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything wrong with that one?
And that, that, that gives plenty of time. If somebody can't make it on the 27th, that gives them plenty of time to find somebody else to represent them and be here.
And actually, that, you know, the, the fact that one of the parties couldn't make it on the 13th has indicated that that's not necessarily a factor, so if the commission wants to, I, I sort of vindicated that maybe somebody couldn't make it the first meeting in August, and, um, that is not a factor anymore, apparently, so.
Let's go to the 27th. 27th, let's, let's do the 27th and be done with it.
Okay, I guess we have a, a motion with a second. Have we clarified any lingering legal issues, Mr. Bailey?
Um, council indicated, as I believe one of the, um, witnesses indicated, that it's actually not even all of both parts of item C, it's only one prong of it.
Second?
Right, if you look.
Yes, and I, I, even though I'm not going to go back and mess with your motion, I want to really emphasize that that's where we want to go.
That's the second prong.
We want to go to the, what's on appeal, what was remanded, and not.
Not all of it.
The language from Luba.
Larger than that. I just want to say that as a point of information, not as part of the motion.
Did the motion have a second?
Yes.
Oh, as amended.
Okay.
Uh, no. No, no, no one said second after.
Actually, Mr. Bailey.
Bob did, I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey did. And so, this motion that's amended by Ms. Commissioner Maine, I didn't hear a second from.
That's really good.
Or, okay, and he, he seconded the amended motion.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and we have an amended second, and a seconded amended second. Please poll the commission.
Commissioner Arson?
Aye.
Commissioner Manglberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Maine?
Aye.
Commissioner Bailey?
Aye.
Chair Bruce and Carter?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is, um, approved unanimously to continue the item, um, VR 99-07, remand of Luba decision, to, uh, the planning commission meeting of August 27th, at which time, um, testimony will be limited to, um, the second prong, uh, factor C and, uh, and factor F, and that the, um, uh, those who are eligible to testify are those who.
Anybody can testify.
Oh, anyone, it's an open testimony. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I'm very sorry that we couldn't resolve this issue tonight. We'll see you on the 27th of August.
I don't think so, you did a fine job, thank you, go out there and talk to these ideas.
Well, that was pretty messy.
It's terrible. Okay, moving right along. Do we have any old business that we need to take care of this evening?
Old business? You know, I had some, but I can't think of any now. So, maybe it's new business.
Well, do we have any new business to take care of this evening?
The planning manager has provided us with a Tulane Environmental Law Journal, is that correct?
That is correct.
Article on, on sprawl, would you care to say a few words about this?
I thought I would, when it was my turn to speak.
Oh, it's.
You're on.
Oh, so we must be down to staff commis, communications to the commission.
Oh, we're on, on new, yes, on new business.
On new business. Um, there were two, uh, items that we came across that we thought would be of major interest to you. One was, um, a well-written, easily summarized, um, executive summary of the Clackamas County Complete Communities Process, which had some interesting ideas that, um, reached out on some of the themes that, um, uh, the commission has been working with earlier in the charrette work. So, I thought that was, um, something that you might want to put in your charrette, uh, sub-file, because we are not forgetting charrettes, we're just, you know, sort of stalled here for, for a while. And, uh, a part of it is, you know, asking about the center, and then looking at a whole county, and trying to figure out what a county thinks centers are, is just very interesting just juxtaposition. And, uh, we may, uh, be able to find some resources from that process to assist the city, uh, later on in the year. Uh, the second article is, uh, on, from the Tulane, um, Environmental Law Journal, um, and it, um, I thought was, um, good practice for this hearing we were supposed to have this evening, and that is some heavy-duty, um, uh, explanation, or we think it's some kind of explanation, of, of the arguments for and against sprawl. And I guess, uh, as I was reading along, I, I was myself, uh, attracted to each of the arguments, and I'd say, "Yeah, but, yeah, but," and, you know, argue back. But I thought it was, uh, pretty interesting, at the end of the article, whether you agreed with everything that was said all the way through. Uh, Portland and the metro region was again cited as a way where people were trying to take a stand and move in some, some sort of direction, even though there may be, um, flaws in the process. And so, that came as a surprise, and I just thought you would enjoy it, so, that was just sort of to keep us, uh, alert in, in our planning mental stuff.
It was, it was a good article, and I thought it was very interesting to, um, you know, the old sprawl, uh, trying to be rethought into urban density, and trying to think of what things urban density might, you know, wreak upon us the way urban sprawl has, and that's a big question, besides traffic.
Yes, it is. And it is interesting that the, the laypeople in the region, although, you know, these, um, uh, I think you make a strong anecdotal argument that, um, the, the region is filled with people who understand planning a lot better than a similar region somewhere else in the country, and we do talk an awful lot about planning. But the, but it does come down to, in the, you know, the layperson's term, because we all have busy lives, to something about traffic, and gee, if they only had more stuff, then, then the planning isn't the issue, the configuration is not the issue, it's just simply where, where stuff is laying according to a measure of traffic. Well, that's the layperson version, but I think this article was getting at a, a much deeper, um, set of, uh, factors that affect all of our, um, built environment. So, that, that, that was fun, too, to look at.
Anything else this evening?
Um, the, the other thing, um, is that we did, uh, conduct some interviews today for, um, our assistant planner position, and there's some very interesting, and I think quite qualified candidates. Uh, we said, uh, goodbye to Barbara, uh, her last day was, um, Friday, the, whatever that date was, I forget, when was Friday? Oh, the 20th. And, uh, her, she will be sorely missed, but you may be, um, uh, coming across our two consulting planners who are helping, um, the, the division with the planning files right now. So, we do have some very capable people, um, uh, working on the, the planning application file and list. And, uh, so, we'll keep you informed as, as we go forward on other recruitment and staffing, um, uh, issues as they come along.
Okay, and, uh, although we are very sad to see Barbara Shields leave, I know she has worked very, very hard for the city for the time that she's been here, she's to be commended for all the hard work and, and the effort that she's put out under, you know, not always good circumstances, so, thank you, Barbara, and, and we'll miss you.
Thank you, I'm sure she'll appreciate that.
Okay, any comments by the commissioners this evening?
I did receive this notice from Metro, uh, they're starting a speakers forum this summer, talking about general planning and, uh, urban growth boundary and open space and transportation issues. Let's Talk is a public outreach effort designed to bring people throughout the region to discuss these issues, weigh the options, consider trade-offs, and determine the best course of action. I thought it might be interesting to chat with them, maybe at our workshop session at some point. So, for a more global view of what we think about.
And whoever supplied the notice of, uh, public hearings on the Secretary of State's redistricting hearings, thank you. Um, the one that will be held here in Oregon City is Saturday, the 28th, which is.
The Saturday?
This Saturday. Secretary Bradbury will be at the East Walton Valley Fire Station up on 7th, that's the one that was renovated, right?
Yes.
Down on 7th.
Well, from where I live, it's sort of up, but, over.
Oh, maybe it's the center, maybe it's the urban center.
Right, across from the Carnegie Center, so it must be the urban center. But, uh, I'm, I'm actually very interested in this, that's a, you talk about having people snipe at you in this job, where we try redistricting all the boundaries in the state, so I'm interested to go to this and hear it, so thank you for providing this.
That came, um, courtesy of, um, Ms. Garter, as, uh, uh, planning commission chair, they sent it there to us, vis a vis, so we just let you all know.
Great.
Well.
This is actually a question for Ms. Collins. Um, has there been any more talk about the charter committee? I was at the meeting on Wednesday, the city commission meeting, and they said that they might be looking for a representative from the planning commission.
For, for what, excuse me?
For the charter, charter, charter review.
Um, yes, I believe they said, um, Transportation Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission, um, that, uh, the council, the city commission might be interested in getting, um, some volunteers. No, uh, we have heard no more on that. You will be notified probably by personal letter or some, some personal communication at the point at which that gets organized.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and one more announcement that we would have, is the, uh, Oregon City Chamber of Commerce is having us monthly toast and topics on the 27th, and our, uh, item this month is going to be urban renewal, and the trip that was taken by business and city leaders down to Lodi to find out about what urban renewal has, uh, been able to complete in, uh, in their city, and it should be very interesting, and if you would like to attend, it's a breakfast for $10, please RSVP to the chamber office. So, that would be some.
By 27th, 9:00 AM?
Uh, actually, uh, it begins at, uh, 7:45, the program begins. The program begins at 8:00. We try to be done promptly at 9:00 so everybody can get to work. And again, with urban renewal being a kind of a hot topic around town here, this is a very timely issue that for anybody who would like to find out more about urban renewal and what it can do and what it has done and what it could do for Oregon City, this would be a good opportunity.
At the river shore?
At the river shore, downstairs in their conference room. So, any other comments this evening? Okay, are we ready to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.